Call to order of the January fifteenth, two thousand twenty Frederick County Planning Commission. If you would please, join me in a moment of silence. The first item is adoption of our agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Next item, I'll call on our secretary, Mr. Mike Ruddy, to handle the election of officers for the new year. I'll turn it over to Mr. Ruddy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission. Happy New Year. And as always with each new year, we start off with a few housekeeping items, the election of officers for the Planning Commission, committee appointments, meeting schedule, and adoption of bylaws. So with that being said, what I'll do right now is address the chairman, vice chairman, and secretary position. Officers, of course, of the Planning Commission will open the nominations, accept nominations, hopefully close them, and vote to fill the particular positions. So with that being said, I open the floor for the position of chairman of the Frederick County Planning Commission.
I nominate Mr. Kevin Kenny for calendar year two thousand twenty as chairman of the Planning Commission.
Second. Any more nominations?
Will be closed.
Move nomination, be closed.
So closed. All in favor of Mr. Kevin Kenny as the chairman of Frederick County Planning Commission, say aye.
Aye.
Close. No. Thank you, Mr. Kenny. Congratulations. Moving on to the vice chairman of the Planning Commission.
We'll see.
Vice chairman of the Frederick County Planning Commission, open nominations.
Nominate Roger Thomas.
Second.
Any more nominations? Seeing none? Close the nominations. All in favor of Mr. Roger Thomas as vice chairman of the Frederick County Planning Commission?
Aye.
Congratulations, Mr. Thomas. Turn it over to Mr. Kenny for the final one.
At this time, I'll take nominations for secretary for the two thousand twenty year.
Nominate Mr. Ruddy.
Second.
Nominations be closed?
Second. Nominations are closed. All those in favor, Mr. Ruddy, certainly secretary?
Aye.
Welcome back.
Thank you very much. Alrighty, so that business is taken care of, but let's move forward now with the adoption of the meeting schedule for two thousand twenty, and you'll see that as part of your agenda.
Need a motion for that? I so moved that we for to adopt the meeting schedule for as presented for the calendar year two thousand twenty?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, it's carried. Also need to entertain a motion for the adoption of the bylaws and rules of responsibilities for two thousand twenty?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. The next item on our I have on here is our committee assignments. The committee assignments will remain the same. Do I need a motion for that, Mr. Ruddy?
No, because it's appointed by the chairman.
Okay, I'm one of these will be frozen as they are, they'll make any changes, they'll possibly come up at a later time, but as of now, we'll freeze all the committee assignments as they are for the year two thousand twenty as they were for two thousand nineteen.
Thank you, and that concludes the first piece of business for the night.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary. Our next item is committee reports, and I don't know, because we've been kind of rushed here, is there a transportation?
No, so we haven't met yet this month.
No, I think there's a Frederick Water.
We meet next week.
Okay. And there's been no PPC, I don't think there's any DRs that we haven't met, so we'll skip those, and we'll go right to our Winchester Planning Liaison.
We'd not have a work session due to the snow. We had three items on our agenda, the old hospital, site plan approval for public hearing on Meadow Branch Avenue, the owners wanted to vacate it right away, and then exterior changes on a property located eight oh two East Cork Street. That should be it.
Alrighty, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
And our last committee report is our new liaison from the board of supervisors. Welcome, Mr. Greiber.
Thanks for having me, it's good to be here.
Okay, thank you. Do you have a report for us this evening?
I have nothing to report at this time.
Well, thank you, sir, that's short and concise, that's the way we like them, so appreciate it. At this time, I'll open up the meeting for citizen comments. This is a portion, anyone come before us to speak, that's something that's on their mind, that's not on our agenda for any of the agenda items, so I'll open the citizen comment portion. Seeing no one, I will close the citizen comment portion. Our next item on the agenda is a public hearing item, conditional use permit number zero eight dash one nine for Tower Co. Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission. This is a CUP for property located one zero seven Emory Court, in the New Peck and Magistil District. The property is currently zoned RA, and its land use is residential. This application before you deny is for a it has been advertised as a hundred and ninety five foot commercial telecommunications tower, however, the applicant prior to the agenda being sent out has is going to be requesting, like, Mr. Chairman, that the telecommunications tower be at a hundred and fifty feet versus a hundred and ninety-five. Again, this is a request for to construct a commercial telecommunications facility consisting of a hundred and ninety-five foot monopole telecommunications facility and accessory structures. The property is located on a four acre parcel that is zoned RA. The property, however, is located within an urban development area and sewer water service area. It is also located within the Southern Frederick area plan. This plan identifies this area to be for recreational resource and the area to the north to remain residential in character. If I could turn your attention to the map on the left, you see that the property is located in yellow or the Old Dominion Green subdivision, the property is outlined, it's also surrounded by a property that Frederick County actually owns, which is the park area. The zoning ordinance requires that commercial telecommunications towers over fifty feet in height be subject to a conditional use permit. The properties, again, immediately adjacent this proposed conditional use permit are RA and RP zoning respectively. The zoning ordinance requires that all proposed telecommunications facilities be subject to an additional performance standards in order to promote orderly economic development, mitigate negative impacts to adjoining properties, residential properties, land use patterns, scenic areas, and properties of significant historical value. The zoning ordinance also requires that the applicant provide confirmation, attempt that was made to co-locate on an existing telecommunications facility or possible co-location structures. The applicant has provided inventory to existing telecommunications facilities, and no other facilities are possible for co-location opportunity or structure in this area. As you look in the package, and as the applicant will present at the end of my presentation, show you that the where the co-locations were looked at and where the other possible sites were. This is just the layout, as we usually see, is a diagram where the telecommunications facility be located on this property. Should the Planning Commission find the issues to be appropriate, staff will recommend the following conditions be signed to this conditional use permit. All review agency comments shall be complied with at all times. Number two, the power the tower should be available for co-locating of personal wireless service providers. Number three, a minor site plan be approved by Frederick County. Number four, the tower should be removed by the applicant or property within twelve months of abandonment of operation. Number five, in event the telecommunications tower is not constructed within twelve months of the approval of this conditional use permit, the conditional use permit would be deemed invalid. And number six, any expansion or change of use should require a new conditional use permit. Following the public hearing, Mr. Chairman, staff is seeking a recommendation from the Planning Commission, the board supervisors, on this requested conditional use permit. For the record, Mr. Thomas Moore is representing the tower companies in this application. Mr. Chairman, I'll answer any questions that you or any of the planning commissioners may have on this conditional use permit for a hundred and fifty foot telecommunications facility. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Any questions for Mr. Chairman? Thank you. Would the applicant like to come forward, Mr. Erwin Lawson?
We would. Ty Lawson here for the applicant, also have with me David Hockey from Tower Co., Jesse Wilmer from Chantel, and we have two radio frequency engineers with us as well, should there be any any other questions. What I'm going to do is introduce David Hockey, he'll he'll give you a brief rundown about Tower Co. and what they plan for the site, and then Ms. Wilmer will walk you through, Chantel will be the tenant, and she'll walk through the RF issues and and more detail about other efforts that have been made to to find other sites. But very quickly, I was reminded earlier today that not many people know this site, and it is kind of tucked away. It's on park property, and what you're looking at is park property, and it's it's behind what I'll call a rustic board fence and and some some evergreens that run the length of of the property and and some other other foliage, but in case you haven't seen it, this is this is where it is, and this gravel drive actually comes into Old Dominion Green, which is a Dan Ryan development. But what I'll do first is turn it over to Mr. David Hockey from Tower Co., and then I'll be next, and then Ms. Wilmer. And then lastly, we do sense there'll be some comments, and we'd love to be able to respond, and we have had a meeting at the Bowman Library. Manager of two homeowners association was kind enough to assemble quite a good crowd and actually had Mr. Thomas and Mr. Wells there as well, so I've learned a lot from that. And I should say, as Mark pointed out, one of the comments was, can you work with us and adjust the height? And we did. The RF guys got together and determined that we could lower it from one ninety-five to a hundred and fifty feet, and you'll see some of the simulated photographs, which are which are frankly much better, because in some cases you can't see the tower, because it's it's dropped. But I'll turn it over to Mr. Hockey.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission. My name is David Hockey, and I am director of zoning with Tower Co. Just to give you an idea of who we are, we're a national tower builder. We build in all states in the country and provide the wireless infrastructure that you see before you tonight for companies such as Chantel, as well as other national providers such as Verizon, T-Mobile, AT&amp;T, Verizon, et cetera. In this case, we were approached by Chantel because they needed a site in this area, there were no existing tall structures that would allow them to co-locate without building a new site, so they approached our company and asked us to do what they call a build a suit, which is, we would build the tower, own the tower, and they would become a tenant of ours on the tower. We would then use that structure to market to these other national providers that I mentioned to promote co-location that was discussed as one of the items that the county seeks, so minimizing the potential for new towers in the area by offering a structure tall enough and with the structural capacity that other carriers could co-locate. In this case, this particular site, it was briefly mentioned, the size of the parcel, and as you can see, we've located the compound in the tower as much as we can in the center of the property, so the property lines to the north are two hundred and thirty-six feet, to the east it's two hundred and thirty-six, to the south it's two hundred and two and two or three hundred and twenty-nine, sorry. So the idea is we've buffered it as much as we can within the center. It'll be contained within fifty by fifty fence compound that would be gravelled. That ground space allows, again, for future co-locations, so other carriers' equipment would fit within that fifty by fifty, but if for whatever reason that fifty fifty would not suffice, we have an overall leased area of a hundred by hundred, so we could expand that to allow future tenants beyond the fifty by fifty fence compound. It would be secured by lock and also by a six-foot fence with barbed wire. As you can see, again, it was placed in the middle of the property as much as we could to buffer it from north, south, east, west locations. And then moving on to the overall tower elevation, again, this was a hundred and fifty or originally a hundred and ninety-five feet, as mentioned earlier, we were able to work with the RF where we reduced it to a hundred and fifty feet. Chantel, as you see at the very top, that's the anchor tenant, but again, we just shadowed in future co-locations, showing that this tower would have the capacity and height to accommodate other carriers in the future. And at the bottom, as I mentioned earlier, it would be contained and secured by a six-foot fence with barbed wire. If there are any questions, I'm happy to answer them now, later, otherwise, I'll turn it over back to back to Ty.
One second. Any questions for Mr. Hockey?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, topography of the site, if you move it further south, that would be moving it closer to the park property, right?
Yes, sir.
So if you move it further south, does it is it topography the same as in the center of the site, or does it topography drop off?
Within within the landlord's parcel that we're working on?
Right.
I believe it's generally fairly flat, so you're not going to have any gains or losses, at the best I could tell.
Okay, but it would move it then farther away from the housing area.
That's yes, that's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, a question, Mr. Ripley?
Yeah. Aren't these monopoles designed to collapse down rather than fall away?
Yes, that's the other thing.
My understanding is that they're designed engineered that they will collapse supposedly, we hope, I hope it don't happen, but.
Correct.
They're designed to come straight down rather than to fall away.
That's correct. So when we design towers, we can design them with what they call collapse zones, and these are only under catastrophic conditions. You can see monopoles that survived the most recent devastating hurricanes from two years ago in the Gulf that were still standing with everything else around them wiped out. But to your point, under extreme catastrophic conditions, we design what we call a collapse zone within the tower such that, yes, it doesn't fall over like a pencil, it collapses on itself and folds. That way, it protects. And the other benefit of this is, within the property, it is buffered such that it's more than the tower height from all property lines, north, south, east, west.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions? Thanks, sir.
Thank you, sir.
First slide, again, I talked with you about the the trees that are visible from the entrance, and this is an aerial which shows a tree line around a compound. It's an interesting site. It's it's a compound within a compound. What was shown on the site plan is actually within the boundaries of the property, and this property is bounded by what I'll refer to as a as a rustic board fence, and then it does have some vegetation around it. When we met with the neighbors, there was some discussion about some holes, if you will, and possibly filling those in, and so we we have done this as a as a representation of and an offer, provided parks and recs will agree, to plant trees in the in the holes where the where the trees are not already there, where the mature trees are not there. There is a board fence that runs the length of this property, and actually, this is a dated aerial which shows quite a bit of outside storage for us to be able to file. That had to be removed and cleaned up, and and I've walked the site with with Mr. Chairman, and that that is its status. Briefly, and for the more for the record, and as Mr. Chairman pointed out, there have been attempts to look at other sites, I'm sure you're familiar and remember, the Bowman Library, the Bass Hoover Elementary School, and those those were not successful for various reasons. We'd had meetings with the neighbors, and they had asked about each, and the short answer is, there was there was quite a bit of opposition to those. There was some mention of a of a deed restriction or restrictions on the public property that at the Bowman Library, although I've talked with the county attorney about that, and it's debatable whether that actually exists in the record, but in any event, Chantel in particular has tried to find other sites to serve the area that is needing service without success, and and we're we're not aware of any other site. We were frankly, we believe, very fortunate to find this site within the park property, which, again, is a compound within a compound. Also, and Ms. Wilmer will talk a little bit more about it, you may have seen, there are three short towers that have been installed. The one I noticed the most is along Tasker Road to try to improve service in this area. Ms. Wilmer will talk more about it, and it's effective, but only within a one-block radius, and it doesn't cover the area that that needs the service. These are the sites that that we had tried before, the Bowman Library, next to Bass Hoover on the county property, and then, of course, this is our site, the Tower Co. site, which is right below Old Dominion Green. There was a mention also for the for the benefit of the neighbors, there was a discussion about doing some studies about adverse effects of property values. Mercifully, we've not created slides of what we handed out, but we have delivered to you all studies that have been done in various parts of the country. In fact, one was Richmond, close close to home, and and talks about how locating a tower does not diminish or adversely affect property value. And in fact, one of our our big issues in in our modern life is connectivity, and if we don't have connectivity, that does adversely affect property values. Anyway, you have that information, and if 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 our neighbors care to have to have this, we'll be happy to distribute it to them as well. I'll turn it over to Jesse Wilmer, who'll talk with you briefly about Chantel, and then also the radio frequency aspects of this application.
Thank you, Mr. Lawson.
Good evening. My name is Jesse Wilmer. I represent Chantel out of Edinburgh, Virginia, so just our headquarters are just south of here in Edinburgh, so we are a hometown operation, and we pride ourselves on having the best network in our hometown. Frederick County is in our backyard, and and we pride ourselves on having the best best network we can for our neighbors. Chantel has approximately one million customers. We provide service, we are an affiliate of Sprint Wireless, so Chantel provides the network, the backend work per se, to Sprint. Sprint has the frequencies, and we're we sell phones as as branded Sprint, Boost, and Virgin Mobile. So Chantel Sprint has two stores in Frederick County, and we have five in the city of Winchester. We have twenty-six thousand wireless customers in Frederick and thirteen thousand in the city of Winchester, and we have fifty percent market share, so one in ten, or excuse me, five in ten people in this area has a Sprint device as their as their wireless provider. All in all, Chantel has thirty-one cell sites in Frederick County to provide coverage across the county, and then we have fourteen of those in the city of Winchester, so we have quite a few cell sites that cover this city and county. So our first objective is when we have a search ring released, is to locate property that first works for RF, has an interested landowner, and then meets the zoning requirements. This area, Tasker Road, Warrior Drive, that intersection there is is kind of our target area where we need to improve coverage and capacity of our wireless network there. And then the secondary objective is to offload the adjacent sites that we have. The more people use their devices, the more capacity these cell sites are drawing in, and they just kind of shrink as the as more folks folks use them. So we're trying to offload those adjacent cell sites to 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 provide additional coverage and capacity. So this site would cover about six square miles of of ground, and there were no existing co-locatable structures in this area. So here's an aerial of the area. The yellow ring is a search ring, so within this area, we were tasked to find a location for a cell site to provide coverage in this area. If you can see, just right in the center, um, there's three little dots, three little red dots. This particular area, we kind of needed a Band-Aid. We were at maximum capacity, people were having blocked blocked calls, lack of coverage, so we tried to do a Band-Aid with the three small cells in this area, and what those three small cells are, are just very, very short, small capacity sites that cover about a block each. They're not really meant for for areas like this, they're meant in more rural downtown areas where you have a lot of capacity in a small area, but as a Band-Aid, we tried to to do this in in that center of an area at that intersection to try to offload some of the capacity, and they don't cover very much, so you don't get a whole lot of bang for your buck there. So right now, this is what our coverage looks like. Green is good, red is bad, and as you can tell, we have a whole lot of red in this area with a whole lot of houses and residents and businesses that aren't covered in this area. And then the purple outline area is that what we would like to improve. All those those residential homes, businesses, schools in that area are what we're trying to improve coverage. And then this is a coverage map if we would have the one hundred and fifty-foot cell site in this area. Now, there are some trade-offs for the lower height, up in the area to the very north, that little squared-off area there, that's up near the Bowman Library, does get a little weak up there, a lot weak, so we'll probably have to do something in that area at some point, but but as a large improvement, this will definitely improve the the coverage and capacity in this area. So talk about a couple of things other than just general using your cellphone. Fifty percent of all households now, you do not have a landline, they are cellphone only. That's pretty pretty incredible amount of people that have no wireline service to their home, who rely solely on their mobile device to work at all times. Seventy percent of all nine-one-one calls come from a cellphone anymore. That's amazing, so if you're out of your home, in your yard, out in your shop, mowing your grass, accident happens, your cellphone, you rely on that to work at all times. Ninety-five percent of people own a cellphone now. It's incredible how many people have those. As far as school and and technology goes, for kids in in school these days, they're reliable rely on having good wireless internet service at their homes to do their homework, to download their projects, to watch teacher podcasts in the evenings. A lot of folks don't have wired DSL or or whatever they have in their home, they they use their wireless device to do that. Kids are pretty famous, they don't always hook up to a computer in their home, they're they're watching things on their iPad or their or their iPhone or or whatnot, so they're connecting to our wireless network to download those those projects or schoolwork that they have. So it's super important for for schools to have that connectivity to a wireless network and have that coverage available to them. We did some photo simulations, we did a balloon test, these are some locations that we did those balloon tests at. Added some distances to to kind of get a a general idea of where we took these photos from. And we kept the original one ninety-five in the photo sim, the larger one, and then we showed the the reduction in in height to one fifty, on the smaller one to the right. So this photo is from the south, from the park. It's about twenty-eight hundred feet away, it's down near the ball fields, looking north. This site is to the the west, it's about two thousand feet from the site, it's from the west looking east, and as you can see, you can barely see it above the tree line now from that from that location. This is a site from the north looking south, it's about two thousand feet away. Again, it's much at at one ninety-five, you can see it, at one fifty, it's it's a lot less visible. This is a site to the east looking west. Again, with a shorter height, it's much less visible from those locations, and that's from about two thousand feet away. This one's kind of to the northeast looking southwest, and that's about that's right behind the site. And this one, again, is a little bit farther away to the north northeast looking southwest, and it's about three thousand feet away. Again, this one with a reduction in. Again, this one with a reduction in height, can't see it. Turn back over to Ty.
Thank you, ma'am.
Be happy to respond to any questions and would also like the opportunity to respond to any citizen comments.
Any questions? Mr. Oates.
150 feet, will a light be required on top?
Great question. Actually, talked with Mr. Sabo, and I believe his comment is included, his, he defers to whatever the FAA requires, and the short answer is do not believe that it is required. You'd have to get above 200 feet to have a light required by the FAA.
Required, yeah, required, but between 50 and 199, it's up there discretion.
I was under the impression that the airport authority had its own sub-reg, if you will, and what Nick told me was, I'm going to defer to the FAA, and that's my comment. Our understanding, and I'll be happy to have the engineer speak to it, but even at the 195, it wouldn't have been required, but at the 150, it most certainly would not. And the other piece I should add, we're not in any proximity to any flight path or anything. We're just a little askew and far away from the airport, so we're not in any landing zone or other area where there could be a scenario where the airport authority would want to see a light.
I was mainly interested to see if you'd run the 150 by the FAA yet.
We've not, and as part, one of the conditions, we would obviously do that and comply with whatever they require. I'll tell you, we did get comments, there's a tower further to the south of us that apparently can be seen in the distance, and it is well above 200 feet, and it's got lighting up and down, and I talked with Nick about that, and that, he believes that was a FAA requirement. But again, it's because of its extreme height.
Right.
Thank you.
Well, the lights on top are what's the biggest impact, I think, to neighbors.
We heard from the neighbors, I don't think they like either one in that case, but fortunately, we're not in that situation.
Any other questions? Mr. Lawson? Do you have no one?
Thank you all.
Thank you. This is a public hearing item. This time, I'll open a public hearing for anyone who would like to speak for or against this matter, and you come forward, come to the microphone, state your name, your majesty or district, and keep your comments to three minutes. Mr. Ruddy will be timing us tonight, so come forward.
Hi, my name is Dina Sibley, and can I use this slide? Is that okay?
It's not mine, so yes.
Okay. They were stating in one of the pictures that that is park property? That is incorrect. That is my backyard. I will be looking at this thing day in, day out. My husband and I and two little girls moved here a year ago from Loudon to escape all this. We paid for an upgraded lot to back to the park, to back up to tranquillness. We did not sign on for this. We are not okay with this in every, any way, shape, or form. Everything that it brings, we are against. So we're not happy about it.
Good. Thank you, ma'am.
Kevin Sibley.
I'm her husband. As she said, we live there, right behind the tower, and we didn't sign up for this. The pictures they showed are from thousands of feet. We're going to be directly looking at this out of our back window. We can see that the southern tower that they stated, a ways down. This is going to be 3D now for us. So it's going to be right in our faces. And then even the trees that they said they're going to plant, they're going to have to be redwood forest for us not to see this thing. And dropping it 50 feet, maybe from a distance you can't see it, but in our neighborhood, it's right there. The one picture...
I will ask people just to limit their comments.
Right here, this is, this is how close the street bias is. We're even closer than this. So we're going to see this every day. So, and being in our two-story house, it's eye level. So if there are going to be lights, that's more lights in our room. So again, we didn't sign up for this. We didn't want it. We don't want it. So, and I'm sure others will just say that.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Next. And I appreciate you all for performing online. It really makes it easy on me. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Bradley Comstock, resident of the Opeckin District, and actually, I live in Old Dominion Greens as well, but I have the added perspective that I'm a local Realtor here in Winchester and Frederick County. And so there are a couple of things that I just wanted to mention quickly. One, the conditional use, the requirements for that state that the issuance of a conditional use permit for the sighting, construction, and operation of a commercial telecommunications facility is permitted within the zoning district specified in this chapter, provided that adjoining properties, surrounding residential properties, land use patterns, scenic areas, and properties of significant historic value are not negatively impacted. I have, just on a personal level with my career, working with consumers and clients, customers, looking for homes, I know how they would perceive this, and I know that it would be, it would have a negative impact on me and on their willingness to proceed in purchasing a home that were to back up to this. I've spoken with several appraisers to try to see if we could put a monetary value on how that would negatively impact that, and there's just nothing like it here. There's been no cell tower built adjacent to, or so close to, a residential high-end neighborhood. People are paying $450,000, $500,000 to get in this neighborhood, and the studies that I'm finding are showing that it could decrease values by 10 to 20%. That's a huge loss for us. The closest thing that I can find are some of the larger power lines in the community, and not in the community, in our county, and there's one specifically at, there's a home at 2831 Apple Pie Ridge Road. It's a 2,600-square-foot home on six acres, and there are power lines that go right adjacent to it. This home has been on the market for over a year, starting at $400,000, and it's now finally under contract at $350,000. There are other comparable, very similar homes that have sold in much quicker time, 60 days, for between $420,000 to $500,000. So that's the closest comparison I can get to how it's negatively going to impact values. But just coming from, I wanted to offer that perspective, and I appreciate your consideration.
Thanks, sir. Next.
Yes, sir.
Good evening. My name is Justin Mistrada. I also am a resident of the Opeckin District and live in Old Dominion Greens, and like Brad, I'm also a Realtor. So I also have two perspectives from it. Personally, I actually have two different clients right now that are looking and have looked in Old Dominion Greens at new builds, as well as there are two existing homes that are for sale in the area. I let them both know what was going on, and there could potentially be a cell tower put in. One of the, one set of clients was very upset because they were very interested in living in the community, and they want me to keep them updated. That, to me, says that that will lower property values, because people will not be as interested in living in the community if that cell tower is up. Also, I found some studies, one that was from the National Association of Realtors, where they found that 94% of home buyers and renters surveyed said they were less interested and would pay less for a property located near a cell tower or antenna, and 79% of those people said that under no circumstances would they ever purchase or rent a property within a few blocks of a cell tower or antenna. In addition to that, HUD, the Department of Housing and Urban Development, in their reference guide for their appraisers, they actually list out that an appraiser must indicate whether the dwelling or related property or improvements is located within an easement serving, among other things, a cell tower, cellphone tower. To go further into that, if the dwelling and related property improvements are located outside of the easement, the property is considered eligible, no further action is necessary. But the appraiser, however, is instructed to note and comment on the effect of marketability resulting from the proximity to such hazardous, to such site hazards and nuisances. So HUD is literally labeling a cellphone tower as a hazard and a nuisance. Again, I assume that that means that property value would be lowered. On a personal note, I also am a cancer survivor. I've been cancer-free for six years, and when I was diagnosed, from that point on in our lives, my family, my wife, and two children, we have tried to live healthier, cleaner lives. If I knew that a cellphone tower, which may or may not affect me negatively health-wise, there are studies on both sides of those, so I don't know, but if I knew that that would be erected within blocks of my house, I probably would not have bought or built in that area to attempt to take as good a care of myself as possible. So I think that all of these things can easily show that property values will be affected in our area, which is not good for our residents, and also for tax revenue purposes. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Next.
My name is Joan Lefler. I live in the Opeckin District, and my property, my property is about a tenth of a mile from where this proposed cell tower is going to be placed. And even though they are willing to lower the height of the cell tower, it'll still be looming high above my backyard, and I frankly don't appreciate that. I also was a real estate agent a few years ago. I'm retired now, but I can tell you, my buyers would not have been interested in purchasing anywhere close to a cell tower. It is visual pollution to a buyer, and also, there are unknown questions about any health impacts. I don't know if you're aware of this, the World Health Organization has a subcommittee, the IARC, and they have designated radio frequencies as being a possible human carcinogen, and other people claim that they have had other types of health impacts because of this. I don't understand why we're putting something like that so close to people's property. Those pictures that you see, they look like they're down in a pit compared to the level of the homes. My recommendation is that all of you people go out there and take a good, hard look at what that site really looks like, how close it is to people's homes, and ask yourself if you would want to live that close to a cell tower. What about the park? Has anyone considered putting this away from people's homes? It would make a lot of sense. There's, park has a lot of acreage, and people wouldn't complain. They know they need cell towers, but it would make sense to put it as remotely, as remote from different developments as possible. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next.
Yes, hi. My name is Kendrick Gambary, and I'm also a resident of the Opeckin District, and I live in Old Dominion Greens. I just want to speak to the, I guess, kind of the comment that was made as they were going through the slides about, you know, one of the scenes showed that we were living in the Dark Ages and that, you know, we were all lost because we're using cell phones. My kids are still very connected. I'm connected. It's a competitive issue here. It's not a coverage issue here, and I want to make that very clear. We all can call the ambulances. We can all, you know, figure our way out of this, you know, dark room that they're trying to say that we're in. We are absolutely fine. So when it comes to putting some kind of entrocity in our backyards after we have invested so much into our properties, and we are so proud to be residents of that area, it's just asinine to believe that somebody could come up here and try to spew that without this huge thing, that we're going to, you know, not be able to progress forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
My name is Nicole Marco. I'm also part of the district affected. Coming from North Virginia, you would say Apocambe, but our family moved here, also a resident of Old Dominion Greens. Our family moved here from urban Fairfax County to seek community space in a more suburban feel and space. Having previously been in rezoned communities, our family has experienced the burden of decreased home values, as well as lengthier home sales due to those rezoned communities and allowing things like this structure into those areas. Prior to moving out here, I was also a section manager with the Fairfax County Park Authority, overseeing 12 different sites across the county. We worked with companies like Chantel to construct sites and generated monopole revenue from that. We did see as a part of that agency that we had 17% decreases in revenues in rental properties in our parks when towers such as these were constructed in them. So I just thought I would mention that from that perspective. Also, I've sat on boards like these or in the, in the, in the audience as a park employee, listening to citizens, Realtors, and appraisers consistently all voicing the message of lower home values and unknown long-term health risks. Right now, like Justin said before me, we don't know. We don't have 30, 40, 50 years of experience and exposure to know what the long-term effects may be. Frederick County is also not urban Fairfax County. We have wide-open spaces. There are other options, okay? I would just ask that you consider the residents who have financially committed to this community over the potential one-time access, monopole revenue that you'll get from companies and technologies that come and go every single day. Please consider the revenues from our families and community as a whole, and the result of potentially lower home values on these high-valued homes in Stevens City that are drawing more attention from others who would build between $400,000 and $550,000 homes in our area. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, sir.
Hello, and thank you for having us. My name is Court Maddox. I'm with the Opeckin District as well, and a member of Old Dominion Greens subdivision. After we had the meeting with Chantel Tower Co. and so on, I came back, I started a petition within the community to go against this, just in case we didn't have a wide amount of support. We did garner over 205 signatures on that petition against this particular tower within a week's time period. So obviously, as you can tell from the audience, as well as the petition, there is plenty of opposition against this. As has been mentioned, some of the items referencing the fact that cell phones, tablets, and so on are used, as Nicole mentioned earlier, there is Wi-Fi. We do have Wi-Fi. This is not going to increase services to the community. It is going to, as you've heard, decrease value based on the research that you may do, and I'm sure that if you were looking at it and deciding whether or not to purchase a home, and you were faced with the opportunity to purchase one next to a cellphone tower or not next to a cellphone tower, the answer is very simple. So what we are doing is proposing that it may be put somewhere else within the area, the county, what have you, in order to still provide those services if they feel that they're strictly necessary. Some of the information that was given to us at this meeting was regarding the fact that there were no other places that were, there were no other places to build this particular tower. The reality is, if you've been over by where the new middle school will be built, you've been off of White Oak Road, there are a ton of different areas over there that are not developed, as well as Nicole mentioned, the park, and I believe a couple others, that maybe that's a possibility, but certainly, we don't want it next to our homes to decrease the value from the investment that we've made and to our community.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you. Do you want this? Happy to supply it.
You can leave it there. We'll get that.
All right. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Hello, I'm Robert Lefler. You just heard from my wife, Joan. I'm going to take this opportunity to mention that 45 years and two weeks ago, I met her at the end of an aisle in a church, and we've been married all this time, and she still puts up with me, I don't know how. But I just want to do kind of a point of information. It's been said that there are no other tall structures around. I just want to point out, and... And I just want to point out, and the slides that show portions of Old Dominion Greens, every one of those has shown our property. We back onto the park right up near Emery Court, though we're not on Emery Court proper. And if I'm standing in my backyard and Shorando is playing somebody at home, I certainly can see those lights. So there, there are tall structures nearby that could potentially be repurposed or have an additional purpose, or at any rate, you already have something tall that's there. I also want to point out that the plans for further development in Shorando Park include ball fields, an expansion of ball fields. Where you have ball fields, you're going to want to have light towers. That's another potential place. Just saying that point of information, there are other potential tall structures that are within the park. If you take a look at the map of the area, this particular small parcel is sort of a lopsided square that is totally within the boundaries of Shorando Regional Park. So the tower is already inside the boundaries of Shorando Regional Park, no matter what you do. So thank you all very much.
Thanks, sir. Next. Yes, sir.
My name is Robert Brett. I also live in Apokon and in Old Dominion Greens. I'm going to use this thing for a minute. A couple of points I wanted to make out. Get that picture up. All right. So this picture right here shows one direction going into this private lot. What they're not showing is, to the right of that, is a very active bike trail that kids use constantly, 16-year-olds, to get into Shorando Park. It goes into Shorando Park. So I really personally don't want my 16-year-old riding his bike by this thing. I also live across the street from Mike, or from, yeah, Mike, I call him Mike, the previous gentleman, and where this was in his backyard, this would be in my front of my house as I looked out. And if I'd have known it was coming, or if it had been here already, I would not have bought that house. So, thank you.
Thanks, sir. Yes, sir.
Good evening, Commissioners. David Williamson, Gainesboro District. Thank you for your time this evening. I'd like to just bring a couple of points, and I'm not going to speak in opposition, unfortunately, I'm going to be the red herring tonight. A hundred years ago, this same uproar existed with telephone utility poles. They were a necessity. Today, we have underground lines in some subdivisions, which is great. But we also have the need for communication. And communication can't exist without having enough cell towers to be able to cover capacity. And as we have more people that move into this county, capacity is going to continue to increase. More and more people that are using high bandwidth multimedia services and more people that are disconnecting from wireline services, whether they may be Comcast, Verizon, whatever they may be. They're getting unlimited data on their cell phones. They're doing screen sharing from their cellphone directly to their TV to watch their unlimited data Netflix right directly from their phone. All of those things require capacity. What most of the people don't understand, that don't have an RF or engineering background, is that capacity does exist, and that when you have a tower that reaches a specific limitation, you can no longer continue to support growth. And if Frederick County is going to continue to grow and have an influx of population, that has to be considered as part of that. And I think Chantel has done a great job historically at trying to find locations, and they've been shut down, and they've been shut down, and they've been shut down. And how much money are we going to ask Chantel to continue to pay to try to solve the problem for the citizens of Frederick County? And the citizens of Frederick County want to continue to object to it time and time and time again. At some point, there has to be someplace where we say, Uncle, that these companies need to be able to solve these problems, and they can't just do it magically without putting up additional towers. You're more likely to get cancer from the cellphone that you carry right here on your hip or in your purse than you are from a cell tower. And studies have been done that have proven that, but it's a fact, right? So people that are concerned about cancer, they should not have a cellphone, honestly. FCC has already made federal decisions to abandon copper plants, citing that wireless telecom is the path forward for voice and data. They're no longer subsidized with any grant money, any copper plants. That's why you see Verizon is constricting on their DSL services and no longer expanding, because the subsidy money no longer exists on wireline. Federal subsidy dollars only exist on wireless at this point. And this is something that we have to consider as we move forward, that these are going to continue to constrict. Eventually, copper is not going to exist, you're not going to be able to get it anymore. Co-location on this structure will allow other future carriers to also address capacity issues as they may exist in the future. And lastly, as a real estate investor myself with a couple of dozen rental properties that I have in this area, a cellphone tower would never sway my opinion on whether I would buy or what I would pay for a particular property. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, sir. Yes, ma'am.
So my name is Stephanie LaPlante. I live in Old Dominion Greens with a lot of other people that are here. Thank you for reducing it to 150 feet. It's still obviously visible per the slide of fellow neighbors' backyards. So it is the tallest structure. Even at 150 feet, what's stopping them from not building it taller after they get the approval? The fence that we were discussing with vegetation behind it is not 150 feet. Evergreens, as was said previously, were something that would need to be built in order to have that happen. They've obviously tried in other areas, and it's been unsuccessful. That's not our problem. We shouldn't have to deal with the eyesore in our backyard, our property values diminishing, potential health risks. Cellphone is in front of me. I have connectivity. I have internet service. I can use Wi-Fi calling. I can do so much with my internet service. I don't rely solely on my cellphone. And a lot of other people, yes, they may have only cellphones, but there's also internet as well. I am with Sprint. I find it interesting that this thing is only going to cover a six-mile diameter, I believe, is what was said. A lot of red on the map, again, from a previous comment that I heard, it was just beautiful. We're not in the Dark Ages. We have connectivity. This is not as big a deal as they are making it. Put it somewhere else. This shouldn't be our problem. Hundreds of thousands of dollars have been invested in this community. I am 33 years old, paid $450-plus thousand for this house for this to go in right behind me. It's just unacceptable. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. He was standing, waiting there. I'll catch him. He was hiding behind the post. We got him. There you go.
Hi, my name is Bart Muller.
You can bring that up.
I'm in Old Dominion Green as well, with everyone else. And I just had a question for Mr. Hocky. I don't know if he can answer it or not.
Not right now, he can't. We'll, we'll address that later. Just go ahead with your comments.
My question was, he originally said the lot was 50 by 50, and it could expand to 100 by 100. My question is, how many towers could go into that lot? That's my question. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Now, ma'am, yes.
Thank you. I'm Viviana Dotson. I'm from the Back Creek District. This is not the only tower going up in the county. We have another tower in our district, Middletown Chimney Circle. It's our neighborhood. Chimney Hills is the name, but Chimney Circle is the road. We already have a tower. I have it next to my house. I open my back door and I see it. It's over 100, I don't know if, I believe it's 100. It's already built, and it was built by someone here who has the business. It's a business. We already have a house with a tower, with a business in it for internet. I don't mind again, I'm not against internet, but I do care about our homes, the value of our homes. They're going to go down. There is a house with an internet tower in it, and it's not selling because nobody wants to look at that house. Now, the value of our house in our neighborhood, in our neighborhood will go down. I don't care what everybody says, but nobody wants to open their window when somebody comes and build a tower without any permits.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else? Is this public here? Yes, ma'am. Yes, sir. Come on.
I'm Scott Dotson. I am from the Chimney Circle location. I'm not a speaker. I, I don't know the protocol here, but I will tell you that a tower was built. I'm the adjacent property owner. A tower was built beside my house, beside my property. My house is probably 300 feet away from this tower. All these nice little diagrams by Chantel and so on, all these nice little
Just address me.
Sorry.
Sorry.
Diagrams and everything look really nice. They're blurred. They're, they're not really realistic. You know, you come and look at that tower beside my house, especially when the sun's out, when the sun is sitting there and this thing is shining, it's, it's ridiculous. You know, the thing wasn't built, it, it, there was not a proper way to build it. It was illegal when it was first built. There was no permits pulled on this. They had a shutdown once. I, I don't know if it's back up again. I don't know if it's back up again. But in any case, there was no permits pulled on this. You know, I've worked in construction all my life. As far as Ricketts, from Ricketts Construction Company to now D.L. George, I'm a federal contractor. I do know cer, a little bit about permits. When it comes to permits, you, when you put up a structural feature, as far as footings, tie-downs, you, you've got forces like lateral load to consider. It's got to be engineered, lateral loading. Any structural feature has, I have, I have to go pull a permit to pour a footing for my deck. And this thing is already built 100 feet tall. It was just recently built. So you come look at that. I invite you to come to my house. You look out that window, and you see this thing. You know, we have a lot of friends that come over and visit, a lot of friends. What do you think the topic's going to be during those meetings when they come over? It's going to be that tower. I think it's ridiculous that, that a tower goes up illegally, and then, all of a sudden, it, in a residential zone, a nice, calm residential zone.
You're going to have to be wrapping this up.
I'm sorry.
Your time's up. But that's, wrap it up real quick.
The reason I bought this property, I've been here for 20-some years, but the reason I bought this property was because of the serenity. I have a high-stress job. I come home, it, it's a beautiful area. But to see this tower, it's ridiculous. Come see it.
All right. Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
My name's Shane Rank. I live in Old Dominion Greens as well. It's a pretty good view, not really actually, because it's pretty blurry. So just really quick, just a couple of things, I want to be really fast on this. So I think the first thing is, it's going park area, right? So I think, to me, my general idea of a park, and everybody else has already spoken about Old Dominion Greens, so 100% agree, I don't want to look at that every day. It's awful. I work in Loudoun County. I see that stuff all the time. We come and live and pay all this money to be out here so that we don't have to look at that. I drive at it every day. That's enough. I don't need it out here. Another thing is, a park, right? So a park's supposed to be peace, serenity, you know, they build a dog park, you know, you bring your kids, you do all this other fun stuff, bike trails, you know, ballpark, yes, I understand the lighting and things like that, but it's recreation. It's fun. I don't really want to be bringing family members in and go, hey, let's go to the field, and there's this gigantic cell tower standing right there, because pretty much anywhere you go in the park, you're going to see that. I don't know about you, but I think that's not an ideal situation. Secondly, coverage. So if I can find the picture here where we're talking about this main area, they want, their goal is this yellow circle. So I'd like to really try to figure out, you know, they've gotten two other denials. They come to ours to try to figure that out. That's a pretty, pretty big yellow circle. So I really don't understand why another location can't be found within the yellow circle that probably has not a lot of communities around it. Also, I don't, I'm not an expert on any of this stuff, but I'm pretty sure the higher the tower, the better the service, correct? Is, I mean, we can hopefully get that answer. So if you go out to a mountain that's in the middle of nowhere, and you build a 600-foot tower, I'm assuming you could probably increase your range and increase the circle. I could be wrong. Hopefully, they can answer that. Last thing, I actually work for a data center. I know that this is the future. So that 100 by 100 square that they're talking about, it's going to happen if it gets approved, guarantee you. Co-location facilities happen at these towers, and it's going to continue to happen and continue to grow. And they work side by side. And it's, once this goes, you're going to see this everywhere. And good luck getting nice communities like Old Dominion Greens, because it's not going to happen. That's it.
Thanks, sir. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, guys. My name is Hope Neal, Opeckin District. Trying to remember all the things I need to say. Old Dominion Greens. Emery Court is the cul-de-sac that kind of spines off of my cul-de-sac. If you bought a lot on my cul-de-sac, more than likely, you paid an extra $5,000 for that nice park view. So there is definitely some promises that will be broken if this tower goes up. It's a bummer. I'm 25. I've got three boys. We're also foster parents, so we've got kids coming in and out also. And it was a big accomplishment for us to get this home and have this place where our kids can grow up. And hopefully, unless we break some hips, we'll live there forever, because we do upstairs, so that would be tough. But if you look out into this audience, I can name most of the kids of these people that are back here. A lot of these people have more than two kids. In my cul-de-sac alone, we've got families with kids that are ranging from, I don't even know how many kids. It's a lot. We took the fruitful and multiply very seriously in our cul-de-sac. And when I think of this cellphone tower going into that entrance, the woman who came up here first, she's got three-year-old twin girls, precious. I have a three-year-old boy. I'm not saying anything's going to work out, but if it does, I wouldn't be disappointed. That square block right there that, right now, is like a wood fence, it's them putting barbed wire up there, I just think about my three boys being like, ooh, jungle gym guys, did you see that tower? The amount of traffic that goes through there, there, there are bike trails, running trails. And then, I'm sure that there's also going to be quite a bit of maintenance trucks that are going in and out of that area as well, right beside her house. I know our neighbor, the Lemays, they didn't make it tonight, unless, they're sick.
Speak this way.
They didn't make it tonight. They're also opposed. It would be a danger to the kids that are running around, and then in the park too. I don't know why they would approve it, because that's just a lawsuit waiting to happen. Someone's going to get hit. Kids are me climbing this fence, who knows what. Might be my kids. Sorry in advance. Anyway, I don't like it. And I think I speak for a big band. If you guys just want to raise your hand, if you're from Old Dominion and you don't want this tower.
No, just speak to us. We won't be doing public demonstrations.
Okay. Don't look at their hands, never mind. That's it. Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Shut up for me to ask.
My name's Nick Pitch. I'm in Apokon District. I've lived in Old Dominion Green for five and a half years. Well, so far, I've had one person that's in favor of the tower, and he's from Gainesboro District, I guess. The pictures that they show up here, the pretty PowerPoint pictures, whatever, they say they're going to help Shorando High School. Shorando High School hasn't helped at all in any of these. It still stays red. I have a couple of questions, which maybe you can ask. Have Tower Company, is the company building the tower? I don't know if any of you have been on the site, seen the site. I'm wondering if they've done an environmental Phase 1 survey on the site. You're just uphill from Wright's Run, which obviously goes into Apokon, which is your water supply for this county. Also, Land Grant Lane LLC. Why are they trying to put a conditional use permit on the whole property? All they need's a 100 by 100 in the center. Could issue use the whole property, they could put up towers forever on it. That's all.
Thanks, sir. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, this is the board.
I'm Bob Wells. I live in Stevens City in the Opeckin District, and I'm on the Board of Supervisors, and I represent these folks who are here tonight. And I want to thank them for being here. And I wanna thank them for being here and taking advantage of public hearings, which is great in our small area that we're able to do that. Uh, I'm not gonna make any comments about yea or nay on this, but I would like to, for the folks that don't know me personally and haven't seen me, um, to let them know that I'll be in the back of the room, I'm available if they'd like to speak with me tonight. Uh, and I certainly appreciate them coming out and speaking their voice on this issue. Thank you all very much, appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Wells. Anyone else?
Hello, my name is Natalie Watson. Um, I live in Wyclan Manor. I really didn't intend to speak, I'm on the autism spectrum. Um, I know you all said that with the light bringing, bringing it down, you won't have the, the blinking light, which is better. I, there are other people in the neighborhoods around me that have children that also have autism. Seeing that blinking light every time, when you look out the, the door, um, I can't look in that direction, so I do hope at least if they lower it and it is approved, that we'll not have a blinking light. But the other things that I also wanted to say is that, you know, like someone else said, when people go to a park, we're going to decompress, to regenerate, to get back into nature and refill our souls. So having this big tower there kind of is the opposite of that. That makes us think about the busyness of everything that's going on, and it's not a place to regenerate and decompress. Also, I would not buy a house near, um, a tower. I wouldn't even look for, when I was looking at properties, even ones that had communication boxes, little things on the property, I would, did not choose that. Um, though, and if these houses don't sell for as much, then the property won't be worth as much, and the property tax that the county can collect will possibly be less than the amount that Chantel is paying you for the, um, tower. Um, the other thing as far as the studies that they have conducted, I think a lot of them have been on rats and other animals, but I haven't seen the specific studies. I know a lot of studies can't test on children, and I don't know if you know this, but there has actually been a, what they're calling a new organ, just discovered in the human body called the, uh, I didn't, I don't know the intersittisol, I don't know the exact name, but you can't photograph it. It is fluid-filled and it circulates the whole body. They think that this may have something to do with the way that cancer cells move. Um, and, and I guess that's all that I am thinking of, 'cause I have a little bit of a block right now, but, um, yeah, thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am, appreciate it. Anyone else? Last call, anyone else? And I'll close the public hearing. Applicant, would you like to respond?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and, and we appreciate the comments, appreciated the opportunity to meet with, with many of these neighbors at Bowman Library. To respond to some of the, the points that were raised, one, Mr. Oates, I was actually able to ask Mr. Hocky, he does have the FAA determination, and we can provide it, and no lights are required. And actually, that would, that would, uh, to the last lady who spoke, I think she raised that as well. I know you all know, but more for the benefit of the, of the record, if, if we build to the applicable federal standards, which we do and we're required to, it, it is deemed to be safe from a, from an emissions perspective. And I greatly appreciate the gentleman who spoke about the, the issues, much far greater issues you have just with even a handheld device. Chantel is, is a utility, it's charged with delivering service, you all know that. Um, they're not marketing or, or, or doing anything other than trying to keep up, and, and that's why they've tried these two sites, they've not been successful, and they're at this, this site, which is in the park, but it's an interesting site in the sense that it is on a piece of p- property, a private piece of property, that is, I understand it was there before the, the balance of the property was acquired by the park. Um, and we submit, we're, we're lucky to have it, we can build within a compound, and those are hard to come by. Usually, you're, you're making a compound in a site, we're actually within an existing compound, and, and we are sensitive to the view. And I heard one neighbor say that we, we bought because we were promised the view of the park, but again, this was private property, this property's been there for quite some time, predated the park, and, and to have repurchased, they purchased with that, with that compound behind them, which we, we've actually, uh, made some efforts through this application process to, to, to spruce up. There was a talk about, um, uh, looking at the lights within the park. We actually saw those as well from Emery Court, um, from ground level. In fact, I myself noticed, you can see the lights, the lights on the softball field, and thought about that. It was explained to me, and, and Mr. Williams can explain it better, that when the park was acquired, it was acquired using federal funds, which are, have, and do have restrictions on them, and unfortunately, they don't allow a use like this. And, and Rod explained to me that there was even a swap that had to be done in order to get rid of or move out from under this, this, uh, uh, restriction, some property to allow something else to, to, to happen, uh, that was consistent or not violative of the, of the funding restriction. Uh, but that was not lost on us, we did look at that, uh, and, and we can't go in the park, and actually, the parks have a comment letter that they're not in favor of this tower either. Um, there was a comment about a higher tower, better, go to 600 feet, the RF fellows are here. Uh, unfortunately, it doesn't work that way. We can't have one really big tower in this county that'll serve the whole county. That would be great, I suppose, although that would be one heck of a tower. Um, but the way the frequencies travel and so on, it, it, it does not work, and if you all have questions further, these, these gentlemen, Chris and James, can explain that. Was a question about multiple towers? No, one tower. Anytime you wanna put a tower in this county, you go through this process. Um, we're not applying for anything but the one, uh, at the reduced height. And then lastly, I believe somebody made a comment about trips, and we didn't bring that up. Um, general rule of thumb, there will be a visit to this site approximately once a month per carrier. So if it's Verizon, they'll be there once a month. Uh, when we were at Bowman, it was explained to me, it's a pickup truck-type vehicle. They'll come in, check on things, and, and leave. So if there's another carrier, two a month, but there won't be an excessive amount of, of trips. Um, thank you all for your time, and, and be happy to respond to any questions.
Do we have any questions for the applicant? Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Any questions for staff? Any discussion amongst ourselves?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Uh, I know this is a very, uh, very emotional issue for a lot of people. Uh, this is really a, a two-edged sword, and again, I, I wanna echo Mr. Wells's comment, thanking everybody that came out tonight and spending their time to come here to talk about it, and we're, we're also at the meeting a couple weeks ago at the Bowman Library. Uh, I also wanna thank the applicant for listening to some of the comments that he received at the Bowman Library to try to come up with a compromise that would, uh, benefit or that would settle some of the concerns by the neighborhood, and I think lowering it from almost 200 feet down to 150 feet was, was quite a compromise on their part. Uh, there, there's a lot of, uh, you know, back to, this is a, a very emotional issue. It's tough for the neighbors, it's tough for people in the area. You, you, there's, you know, it's a two-edged sword, like I said. If you don't have cell towers, you don't have cellphone service. Uh, you know, people talk about property values. If you don't have cellphone service on a property, uh, you wanna watch your property value crash then, because that's, that's when it'll crash, more than having a cellphone tower a half a mile away. Uh, I will live pro- probably less than a mile from this tower. Uh, I've lived there for 45 years. Uh, I hear the Charando Band when they score a touchdown, uh, on football games on Friday nights. I see the lights from the stadium. Uh, I'm also old enough that I can remember telephone lines going in front of your house and power towers, uh, you know, electrical towers being above ground, not, uh, below ground. Uh, I know there's, there's some sacrifices that have to be made if you want, uh, different services. Luckily, we can bury electrical lines now, we can bury, uh, uh, you know, other things that, that telephone lines. But cellphone towers run on RF frequency, microwave frequency, and you have to have them up above the, uh, uh, line of sight so that they can get service. Uh, there's a lot of discussion about health issues. Cellphone towers have been around for a few years now, it's probably 35-plus years, uh, the cellphone towers have been around. Uh, they've been investigated, uh, and unfortunately, there's no answer one way or the other, whether they're a health risk or not. Uh, but I, personally, I'd be a whole lot more worried about my teenager, and when my daughters grew up, they didn't have cellphones, so didn't have to worry about it. But I'd be a whole lot more worried about having a cellphone a quarter of an inch from my child's brain than a cellphone tower 500 feet away. Uh, that's a whole lot more damaging, uh, for a young child or a teenager, especially when they're walking around with it four hours a day up by their brain, a quarter of an inch away. Uh, and there are studies on that, that, uh, cellphone use for, uh, children under the age of 10 does have an impact on their brain development. So that, but that's not the tower, that's the cellphone that they're holding up alongside of their head. Uh, this is a, this is a tough issue. You have to have cellphone towers where the service is needed, uh, where the area is where you have a lot of residential area. Lot of talk about moving the, uh, tower in that zone. Well, that whole area's developed. I'm not sure where you're gonna move it in that area. The least developed area in that, that circle is where the park is there, and that's where this is. Yeah, it could go maybe a little bit further south in the parkland, but the park won't, you can't put it in the park, so it can go on this parcel of land a little bit further south. But there's really limited areas, if you wanna continue the service there, limited areas where you can put it. I don't have very good cellphone service, I have AT&amp;T. I live in that area, uh, I use my Wi-Fi a lot at home. Out in my yard, sometimes I can't get a signal on my AT&amp;T phone. Uh, you know, I don't know if this would help or not, certainly wouldn't hurt it, uh, but, you know, as more customers are added, the service level's gonna go down and down, and somebody's gonna end up with a cellphone tower in their backyard. And that, that's a tough thing to swallow for property owners where it's gonna be in your backyard, where you're gonna see it. But that's a decision that's gonna have to be made at some time, if not tonight, sometime in the future, there's gonna have to be a cellphone tower put in that area where that circle is, and I'm not sure there's any better location than, than this location. Uh, you know, certainly, a lot of the people out here in the audience think there are better locations, but, you know, I don't know where there are, 'cause like I said, there's, that's, that's a densely populated area right now, dense, you know, there's a lot of houses in that area. So, you know, this is, this is a real hard one to, to look at and to consider, uh, but, you know, I'm not, I'm not sure how to vote on this tonight. Uh, it's benefits for some people. Uh, it might not make few people here in the audience happy, but I'm not sure how many people live in that, that red area or that area where there's gonna be the, uh, the coverage area, there's probably a couple thousand people live in that area. And if 10 or 15 people or 20 people were negatively impacted, you know, how do you weigh that? Uh, what, what, what do you do? Do you take the good for 2,000 people or 1,000 people, and maybe a, a negative impact for, for some people? Uh, you know, over time, uh, you know, a 20-story building doesn't look too bad. Uh, this essentially is gonna be a 12-story building back in the park, uh, you know, that height, uh, you know, it'll blend into the, the scenery in the future. Uh, you know, not right now, but, you know, down the road it will. Uh, but it's a hard issue to, to discuss and to, uh, come to a conclusion. It's something that's needed, but where do you put it? That's my comments, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Moon?
Yeah, I, I think you touched on a lot of great points, Commissioner Thomas. I think, uh, one of the things I struggle with, with this application is the same thing I struggled with, with the Bowman Library location, um, and is what makes it tough for me in this situation to support the application, even though I think that there are probably good technical reasons to have the tower there. I agree with you, I don't know where in this area you put it, given the, the population density and the development characteristics. That being said, I do struggle with accepting the justification, when we did look at the Bowman Library location, that the impacts to the existing residents, uh, were such that that wasn't a good location, it wasn't an appropriate location, and I think that, you know, there's a compelling argument for folks, even if they're, you know, relatively new residents in that area, that, you know, that same logic applies here. So, you know, I'm kinda with you in the sense that I'm, I'm struggling with how to balance, I think, some of the larger infrastructure needs and how we, we accommodate that, um, with, you know, what the, the residents' reasonable expectations are across the board. Uh, so, uh, I'm kinda curious to hear other, other thoughts, uh, but I, I think that's where I'm having some difficulty reconciling this, and, you know, to Chantel's credit, continuing to look to find a way to, to solve the, the issues that are there to ensure the coverage is good, um, it, it's challenging, but I, I don't know where it stops either. You know, what's the place where we say, well, that's the, the best spot? Because it, it is gonna, it's gonna impact some neighborhoods, some residents, and, and that's the, the challenge. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moon. Anyone else? Roots?
Couple minor points. One is, for a lot of you that moved here to Dominion Greens from outside, welcome. You live in the Opeckin District, if you'll, might hear that again, it's Opeckin. Welcome to the area. Uh, second, uh, there was a couple speakers that got up and spoke about Chimney Hills. I think you are here probably interested in the next item that we have on our agenda, not this particular one. Uh, but the rest of you that are here also speaking about the cell tower, this is a conditional use process, it's a public hearing, uh, we get to hear what you think about it. You may wanna stay for our next item after this, when we're done discussing, uh, because we're gonna be discussing whether to make cell towers, or any tower, up to 100 feet by right, in which case it would not be open to the public for you to come and speak. As far as Roger's comments, I understand where you're coming from. I'm one of the guys that's still on a landline. You have a cellphone, it's based in the truck probably 95% of the time, hardly ever carry it. So, uh, there's my two cents.
Okay, anyone else? And thank you for reminding about the, the Chimney Hills, because that did slip behind me. Anyone else? With that, Opeckin District, entertain a motion?
Mr. Chairman, since the planning commission is supposed to, uh, vote on, uh, technical aspects and, uh, uh, location and the technical quality of the appropriateness of the, uh, application, I'm gonna move that we recommend approval to the Board of Supervisors for a conditional use permit, and my screen just went blank. Zero eight dash 19 Tower Company.
I got a motion to approve, do I have a second? Here in no second, the motion fails? Do I entertain another motion? No, whoop, don't allow that here. I'll entertain another motion, we had a motion approved, it didn't get a second, and I'll need to-
I'll move for denial.
I got a motion for denial, do I have a second?
Second.
I got a second. Let me keep track of my notes, I got a second. When you vote for this, if a yes vote is a motion to deny, a no vote be a, a motion against, so I will start with Mr. Marston?
Yes.
Ambrogi, yes.
Manuel, yes.
Klein, yes.
Oates, yes.
Thomas, no.
Mullen, yes.
Morrison, yes.
Shepherd, yes.
Dawson, yes.
Moon, yes.
Chair votes yes. This is a, this CUP was denied, it goes to the Board of Supervisors, excuse me, here on the February 12th, 2020 docket. Thank you, and thank you all for speaking, and like Mr. Oates said, anyone that was here in- And like Mr. Oates said, anyone that was here and misspoke in this particular public hearing that wanted to speak in the next one for the ordinance amendment, please stay, and you're allowed to get up and speak again. Thank you, and thank you all for speaking. Our next item is also a public hearing item. It's an ordinance amendment to the Frederick County Code, and this is Mr. Klein.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission. This is an ordinance amendment regarding the telecommunications facilities commercial section of the ordinance. As you all will recall, the Board of Supervisors adopted the proposed change to the telecommunications facilities commercial requirements on December eleventh, two thousand nineteen, which created a two-track process for the review and approval of commercial telecommunications facilities. Again, created an administrative review eligible projects up to fifty feet in height in small cell facilities, and then anything above fifty feet required a conditional use permit, as we saw earlier this evening. Following the approval of this proposed ordinance amendment, the Board directed staff to draft a subsequent amendment to further allow telecommunications facilities up to one hundred feet in height by right in certain areas of the county. The purpose of this ordinance amendment before you this evening is to enable telecommunications structures up to one hundred feet in height by right in areas of the county west of Interstate eighty-one. Again, only those areas west of Interstate eighty-one. All other requirements of the newly adopted telecommunications facilities commercial section of our ordinance would remain unchanged. I can direct your attention to the left of the screen. This is a map indicating those areas of the county that would be eligible under this increased height allowance. Those areas are highlighted in blue. They're west of Interstate eighty-one, which is shown in red. It includes the entirety of the Gainesboro Magisterial District, the entirety of the Back Creek Magisterial District, and approximately half of the Stonewall Magisterial District. Areas in white on the eastern side of Interstate eighty-one would not be granted this allowance. This item was proposed by the Board of Supervisors at their December eleventh meeting and was subsequently drafted by the county attorney and by Planning and Development Staff. Following a public hearing, Staff is seeking a recommendation from the Planning Commission to forward the Board of Supervisors on this proposed amendment. I'm, of course, available to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Klein? Yes, sir, Mr. Thomas.
Mr. Klein? I've been on a Planning Commission long enough that I can remember back when we weren't going to have any RP west of eighty-one, and that's kind of gone by the by now. So, instead of saying west of eighty-one, wouldn't it be better for the people in southern Opeckin and also the northern part of the county if we said outside of the urban development area as a by right?
It's not that clean of a line, and we went by the explicit direction from a particular board member to use this language. So, that is the language before you. I'm certain they would entertain any comments you have about that language.
Okay. Anyone else? Mr. Oates?
Normally, when we're looking at an ordinance amendment or a new ordinance, we go before DRC, comes before us for public hearing, or, excuse me, public discussion, Board for Public Discussion. Did the Board direct this to go straight to public hearing and skip those steps?
Yes, they did.
Well, if it had gone to DRC, it might have been some ways this could have been done, but as it is, I can't support it. I mean, just look at the people that showed up on a one-hundred-and-fifty-foot tower. If you don't get the citizens a chance to weigh in on what goes up next to their house, next to the property, I think we're doing them a disservice.
Understood.
Good point. Anyone else? Any other questions or comments for Mr. Klein? Thank you. This is a public hearing. This time open to public hearing. Anyone like to come speak before us? Please state your name, Magisterial District, and you have three minutes.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, my name is John Jewell. I live in Back Creek District. I am just newly retired CIO. So, you said this was a technical group. We'll talk technical here. I love what you did before with the conditional use permit. At least people get a chance to review. People come before you with a plan. They get a chance to listen and be able to have a resolving argument. With this, you're allowing someone to take a tower, make it a ham radio tower, and then come along and say, I want this cellular service put on this tower. And there's not a thing you can do about it. That's my understanding. I spoke before the Supervisors on December eleventh about this. I really have a problem with one supervisor saying, I want to see my district and split in our county. I love this county. I've been in this county for twenty-five years. Several of you know me. I actually have a chance where I can speak now. We need to take the county, and we need to have a comprehensive plan. We need to be smart about this. As a CIO, I met with all the different vendors. I had the VPs in my office. We can do the same thing here. We should have the providers come for us. What is your game plan? Folks, 5G is coming. When you get 5G, your towers are going to be closer. That is just a fact. So, if this is going to be about technical and IT, then I really think that you can do us a great service by saying, unless this goes and becomes conditional use permit, don't allow this to happen. There is no way that someone should be allowed to legally build anything anywhere in this county. We're not back in the twenties and thirties. We are way beyond that. So, thank you very much.
Thanks, sir. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Hello, gentlemen and ladies. My name is Derek Snyder, and I'm here, I'm in the Back Creek District. I'm here as a homeowner, but also as a member of the top of Virginia Building Association. And I will say, we have over two-hundred-and-fifty members right now of local building trades and related industries, and we are getting multiple calls from our members about this and asking the same question of why are we changing the process that we have? For us, it's a big concern to not keep with what we have and having this by right, being able to put towers in subdivisions, rural subdivisions, but they're still subdivisions. We've got one going up now. We all know about it. That's the reason that a lot of people are here. And what we are doing is we're asking the Planning Commission to pretty much think about it, just like Mr. Oates did. Is this the right way to grow this county? Why can we not come up with some sort of a comprehensive plan? Because we all want broadband for our children, for families that currently don't have it. But everything else that we do in this county is through a plan. And you saw the turnout tonight from one tower that was close to a residential neighborhood. We're talking about towers in neighborhoods. We're talking about towers in people's yards. There's no buffer. So, as TVBA and our members were asking that you guys keep with what you have, the process that works, not try to fast-track things like this. This is interesting, the way that this is working out.
Thank you.
Okay? Thank you.
Thanks, sir. This, ma'am.
Kendrick Gembary again with the Opeckin District. I'm glad that I stayed, because this is the next precursor to perhaps, you know, down the road, having what we just got so excited about, you know, fall back. The reality is, you know, Verizon's doing a great job. So, I know we threw out some different names, but it really goes back to the competitive nature of what I see here. Somebody mentioned ATT, AT&amp;T, the other said Sprint. I'm in the Old Dominion Greens District, and Verizon is our carrier, and whatever they're doing, they're doing it very well. I have wonderful cellphone service. You talk about the height of the towers, and one of the key things they had said was, well, the other carriers could come in and use it as well. You know, so why aren't those towers, whatever Verizon's doing, can they not use those towers or those exclusive to them, but then this one would be open? The reality is, by not allowing the public to speak when it comes to their property to have these towers put in, you said you lived a mile away, but it wasn't in your backyard. You know, one of the things I had wanted to say was, you know, when it's that close and it's actually affecting you, you know, it's just a very different thing. So, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, sir.
Regan, Back Creek District. Just my computer.
I'm sorry, did you state your name, sir?
Tim Regan.
Oh, thank you. I'm sorry.
My cellphone. Well, I'm up at my house, which is seven miles west of hospital. Neither one of these things work. Cellphone has no service. Without border booster, cost me six hundred dollars. I get one call. What I understand, people don't want things in their backyard, which is fine, and I understand that. But you have to take into consideration, there are people that don't have the services, that all they want are services. Now, do I think a hundred feet's good enough? I don't know. I live in what they call a hollow. I don't know if a hundred-foot tower is going to be good for me or not. I really don't. But what I do know is that I had Dish Network. As a gentleman said one other time before, it was a second mortgage payment. That's what I come out to. And anybody that has it understands that. I am a customer of Winchester Wireless. It was one of the cheapest I found to be able to work. We still have a district, an issue with my house, with getting services. Again, I live in a hollow. All I'm going to ask you to do is that, take into consideration, there are a lot of people that do pay taxes, a lot of people that are out there that need the internet, and what they just want is simple services. A lot of people out there don't have services selections. I don't have anything other than satellite. Chantel won't come in the area. Comcast won't come in the area. I'm only seven miles from the hospital, but yet Shawnee Land, which I have nothing against Shawnee Land, has multiple services, but I don't. I asked Comcast, well, what happened? Why don't we get this? Apparently, they told the Planning Commission, it was too expensive. So, Planning Committee, not Planning Commission, Economic Development, said, okay, you don't have to put it in there. So, I called them again. I asked them, I said, excuse me, what does it take to get this? They said, thirty-five hundred dollars and a minimum of ten people on your block. Well, pardon the expression, but I'm, as they say, the end of the screwdriver, because I only have nine people on my block. What do I do now? So, I'm not saying that everybody wants a hundred-thousand-foot towers and this, that, the other. What I'm going to ask the Planning Commission to do is to take into consideration the areas that need it. That's all. Just the areas that need it, you know. Roger's leave it at that. Thank you for listening to me, gentlemen.
Thanks, sir. Yes, sir.
Chad Pendleton, Back Creek District. I live in Chimney Hills. I have cellphone service. I have wireless internet. My satellite, this big on top of my roof. There's a tower already built. Drive into the neighborhood, there's a hundred-foot unlicensed tower. They were building a shed yesterday for power to the shed. Unethical business practices should be enough. And then, I know the gentleman wanted cell service out in the woods. We're unique. We're a neighborhood, three-acre lots, so we're rural, but we're not rural. I moved from a townhouse to out where I knew my cell service wouldn't be great, and my internet wouldn't be great, and I'm fine with that. So, that's a consideration which you make, is the rules that you make, you shouldn't put towers in your backyard a hundred feet. Does that make any sense? Especially in a neighborhood. Come look at it, it's a little bit crazy. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Yes, ma'am.
Nicole Marco, Opeckin District. I spoke a little earlier with Old Dominion Greens. Just a couple, I guess, of additional considerations, considering this could maybe loom in our backyard again, but also for people who maybe don't know all of these things that are going on. I think it's probably no secret that a business does what they do with the cost-benefit analysis in mind. We challenged, I don't know, twenty, fifteen, twenty years ago, electric companies to start pursuing underground opportunities for electrical options, for safety reasons, for less cost to repair, those kinds of things. The technology may not be here right now, but many companies, if they have the cheapest way to do it, that's the way that they're going to pursue it. So, I think it continues to be both the consumer, but then also folks like yourselves to push back on these companies to find different, better ways. Technology is advancing. To look into those types of things. The other thing is, I don't think any person from Old Dominion Greens tonight that spoke against it was saying that we don't need, for the record, we don't need cell towers. I think it's the consideration of where we place them. And coming up with technologies of, can we create redundant situations? I know that's more of a question for Chantel. Redundant situations where they don't have to be as massive and obstructive. I know I spoke in my statement that we don't know the long-term effects. Yes, cell towers have been around for twenty-five, thirty, thirty-five years, but how many things now are we hearing about things that changed in the fifty, sixties, and seventies affecting, you know, those of us in our forties, fifties, and sixties now? So, keeping those things in consideration as we look towards these things, pushing back on companies to be a little bit more creative in their solutions, because we've seen it. We've seen it happen with all kinds of technologies, to include electrical. So, thank you all.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, sir.
Scott Dodson, Back Creek District, Middletown. I'm not going to give you this big speech like I did last time, but it did apply to this tower.
It's okay.
For it to go up, actually, it's already a hundred feet, but for it to go up legally to a hundred-foot tower, this thing, it's massive. I mean, it's truly massive. And, you know, I could go on and on and on about this thing, but until you come see for yourself from my home, you know, there's people who've talked here, they don't mind this tower, you know, blah, blah, blah. But I can tell you, take this tower, this particular tower, and put it in their backyard. Put it on the next property in their backyard. But this subdivision had gone to try to maintain the aesthetics and the serenity of this subdivision to where I heard information about power lines, overhead power lines. They actually put the power lines, telephone lines, et cetera, underground. And then now, now, they built a tower in there. Now, I've got a lot of neighbors that share my sentiment. I moved from Winchester. I still own a property. It's in Frederick County, in Winchester on five-twenty-two South. I moved out there because it just got too busy in that location, you know, with everything developing and so on and so forth. And the very reason I went where I'm at now is for the reason it was constructed, the I don't know what else to say about this tower. Just come look. Look at close to this to my house. Look at it when the sun shines, please.
All right. Thanks, sir.
I'm finished.
Okay. Thank you. Next.
Good evening, Chairman, members of the Board. Thank you so much. So...
Name?
Bradley Comstock, Opeckin District, again. And I guess I just wanted to say that, you know, sorry, got to get my thoughts together. This western portion of our county is, it's some of the most beautiful land we have. It's rural. The landscape there is, in many areas, still preserved and natural, and there's beautiful farmland. It has a lot to offer, and we get a lot of people who move here for that. And I guess my concern is that by making the ability to build a one-hundred-foot tower by right, you are taking away the rights and the opportunity of citizens to be able to be heard on a topic like that, and that concerns me. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
Thank you for having me back up. My name is Court Maddox. I'm with the Opeckin District. I won't take the full three minutes. I'll be out of your hair. I just wanted to say thank you for taking the time to listen. Of course, we had our previous issue that the members of the community banded together against, and I think and really appreciate the process that you all provided us to be able to have that voice. We bonded as a community over that. No, we don't want to... No, we don't want to see it happen again, but it did give us the opportunity to bond as a community, and so I just wanted to thank you for that. And getting back to this particular topic, without that opportunity, it would have been a completely different story. So, thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Good evening, Shane Ranko, Opeckin District. I kind of was actually going to echo what Court just stated. But I think one of the concerning things off the bat is the by-right statement, especially for a 100-foot tower. You know, I know a lot of people choose to move out this way, to get away from the big cities, get away from the queues I mentioned earlier. You know, I'm very familiar with Loudoun County, Fairfax County. I mean, they're very dense, very populated. I'm not saying everybody moves out here to, to not want to have cellphone service or anything like that. But a lot of people find it enjoyable to be out here. As was mentioned earlier, it's beautiful scenery out here. There's not buildings everywhere. There's not towers everywhere. There's not data centers everywhere. It's, it's different out here, and it's nice. It's enjoyable for most individuals. I think that this is a great opportunity for individuals to come to stand up for what they believe in or to speak what, what they have on their mind, so that you all have a clear consensus of what the community feels and what the county feels and the district feels. And I think by pushing something into a by-right stance, especially something that could, you know, literally go in someone's yard that's that large. I mean, personally, I wouldn't even want someone putting a five-foot object in the middle of my yard with, now asking. So, that, that's really my stance on that, because I think it's just an individual, just as in yourselves, if it was with your properties and, and with your resources and everything that you have done, I feel that you all should have a right to speak to that, just like anyone else here. So, that's all I have.
Thanks, sir. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Good evening, David Williamson, Gainsborough District. And I am the property owner for this subject property in Chimney Hills. And I own this property, and I'm also a licensed amateur radio operator, KN for IOI. In RA District, radio and television towers are permitted use. Federal and state law says that I can have that tower up to 199 feet. It's 100 feet. The setback requirements for the zoning require that it be equal to the fall distance of the tower. It's more than 100 feet from all property lines. It doesn't matter whether it's in a subdivision. It's in RA District. So I'm allowed to have it based on the current code. I could put it higher. I could put it 112 feet, because I'm 112 feet from the sidelines. I didn't. I put it as high as I needed to have it. What they fail to mention is that there's another tower that's in that neighborhood that another resident built in 2010. And for a decade, nobody complained about it, until now, until I put up a tower. So I would like to have you take that under consideration as you're considering this, that this ordinance amendment that you're considering passed back to you by the Board of Supervisors that was introduced by Representative McCarthy from Gainsborough District, and that unanimously passed to come back to you guys for review. They've taken under consideration, and I don't know if any of you watched the video recording of the December 11 meeting. There was a very long discussion that the Board of Supervisors had about this. McCann Slaughter had comments, Supervisor Lofton had comments, Supervisor McCarthy, even Chris Tierney had comments toward it. And McCarthy and Tierney both said that there were economic reasons that there was not going to be a concern, that there's going to be 100-foot towers popping up everywhere just because all of a sudden this passes. Would also like to point out that this is not by right. This is administrative review eligible, which means that it still has to be something that goes before the zoning department, and there are still some criteria that have to be met in order for it to be approved. It's not just by right, as they've stated. And the language says it's administrative review eligible, and there are some criteria that have to be followed there. I apologize.
Time's ticking.
Yes, I know the time is ticking. I apologize. Just making sure that I met all my points here. The thing that I'd like to leave you guys with tonight is this. Supervisor Lofton, Supervisor McCarthy have been, for almost two years now, trying to address this problem in their districts, which is the majority of these areas that are being covered, right? Supervisor Slaughter had that same concern, and majority of her, half of her district is also encompassed with this. And one of the concerns that Supervisor McCarthy had was that things would continue to drag out and that people would continue to drag their feet. And meanwhile, the residents in the western portion of this county continue to suffer, and how long would that go on? I do not want to make this about me. It needs to be about the constituents and the residents of this county. Please, thank you.
Thanks, sir. Yes, sir.
Ladies and gentlemen of the board, Sean Graber, Back Creek District Supervisor, and also a resident, obviously, of Back Creek. Thank you for the opportunity to address you this evening. Six months ago, you saw me up here pounding this pulpit, saying I wanted this to occur. I've spoken with a lot of folks, including Verizon, AT&amp;T, and Sprint, and I've heard a lot of information from them that has compelled me to look a little differently at this issue. The first issue that I was told by AT&amp;T when I spoke with them this week was, our push is towards 5G technology. 5G technology mostly utilizes a 50-foot tower. The by-right of 50 feet, I believe, is a good place to start. If we continue to raise the height of this, we continue to have issues, as has been mentioned this evening. I can see the issues or the need or desire to have a 100-foot tower as at my residence. It is difficult to get cell service. And I understand the needs that have been voiced here this evening. So I'd like to offer a compromise, and I'm going to ask that you deny the amendment that is before you. The compromise that I'd like to offer is this, and this would have to be done at the Board of Supervisors level. Currently, the CUP cost is $7,000 for a tower permit. That is very challenging for a homeowner who's trying to get a tower at his residence to receive internet service if he is in a hollow. I would like to propose, and I will be proposing to the Board of Supervisors, that we revise that CUP price to around $300, or about the cost that it's going to cost us, the county, to advertise that in the newspaper. That would make it so that the homeowner would not have an egregious price to pay to file a CUP while also providing the neighborhood the opportunity to come out and speak on things that may affect their property. If you've heard me in the past, I am a firm property rights advocate. I believe you should be able to do on your property what you desire to do within one reason, that if it affects your neighbor, that your neighbor has some input. So I'm asking that we do not pass this amendment as it is presented this evening and allow the board to have some discussion on changing the CUP process as it pertains to towers. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Well, Rick Mason, Back Creek. A lot of stuff's already basically gone over, but to a point you brought up, hurt a few to help the many. But let me tell you what happens with property values as being a builder. You go ahead in a $500,000 house, which I did talk to realtors, it's going to be on average about $50,000 loss. So, when you go through the appraisal process, it's all done by square foot. So they're going to, you're going to lower the appraisal square foot price, so the, when you go to sell your house, that's not going to affect anybody in Chimney Hills or anywhere. That's going to be county-wide, because that's where the appraisers are pulling their numbers from. So this isn't just a few you're hurting, you're going to be hurting the whole county. And there's builders right now that are afraid to build houses, because when I signed a contract, they say I signed a contract for $350,000. That'd be a good thing. But I have to go through the appraisal value there through a bank. But the bank always comes back and appraises that house at the end. So a lot of factors are going to go into that to the final bank appraisal. So if they come back $30,000 or $40,000 less, I have to sell that house to that homeowner for that $40,000 less, or the bank, and they will walk. So then, I'm automatically stuck with a house that's not worth, you know, I'm already too much money to what it's worth. So it isn't just a few people this is going to hurt. This is county-wide. And if you start taking building permits out, which people are scared, because they're afraid, I go build a house in a three-acre lot. Well, if you do the by-right thing, within 48 hours, there's a tower beside you. There's no process. There's no public hearing. So what am I going to sell my house for? Again, I'm losing money. And I do have builders, because I, some of y'all know what I do for a living, and I just think that you have to keep the CUP. It has to be done responsibly. I'm not saying 100 towers, no, but it has to be responsible. And if you take the CUP away, you're taking a lot of responsibility away from people that are going to put towers in illegally, towers that were already supposed to have been taken down and court-ordered to take down, that he hasn't taken down. Again, without that being done, I can't be here talking to you today. So I appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
Thanks, sir. Anyone else? Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Really wasn't planning to come up here, but there are a few things I wanted to speak about. My name is Ernie Riles. I live in the Chimney Hills subdivision. I'm not right next to that tower that's been put up. The fact that nobody said anything about this other tower that was not that visible, it was actually mounted to a house, is not really an issue. When someone comes into a neighborhood, buys a house, and puts up a tower a day before Thanksgiving, and stays actually, the people were there for several hours, well after dark, with flashlights up at 100 feet. There is something kind of strange about doing that. Why not talk to the neighbors and not do this on the sly? And come around and kind of say, hey, this is what I have in mind. When I moved out to that area, I downsized. And I did a lot of research, checked what the plans were for the future. We have CCNRs in that neighborhood. And it talks about visual pollution and different things like that. Those things weren't considered when that tower was put up. So if you're giving permission to people to do it just because they buy a house, and most of the other neighbors are really opposed to it, is that a fair way of doing things? Don't you think that this should be carefully vetted and checked out what effect this is going to have instead of pushing it through? Another matter, I'm not 100% sure, but I believe there's a conflict of interest in this. One of the supervisors actually has a law firm that represents Winchester Wireless. That supervisor, from the little I know about legal things, should refuse to be able to vote on that. So, there are a lot of other things. We're not having trouble getting service in this area. Now, there may be other areas that this would apply for, and that's why I agree with Sean Graber, that it shouldn't be just a by-right. It should stay the same, and I agree that let's make the price lower. That's all I'll say. I have a lot of other things I can say.
All right, thank you, sir. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
Viviana Dodson, Back Creek District. What the gentleman here forgot to mention, that he is the owner of Winchester Wireless, and he wants that tower so he can provide businesses on a residential area. Like I said, I'm not against internet, but he can build his tower somewhere else. Middletown, the Back District is a huge county. This is a huge county. He can build it in the middle of nowhere. Nobody's against it. But not in my backyard, which is less than 200. It's a few hundreds. I had to go when they were digging to build whatever they were building. They were digging next to my distribution of my septic tank, and I told them, please move out. That's how close it was. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Last call. I'll close the public hearing. Okay, Commissioners, discussion, questions? Mr. Oats?
Uh, Mr. Klein. Uh, listened to the discussion. I kind of keep up, and we have two different things we're talking about. One is the ordinance before us, and this other is this tower, Chimney Hills. I don't think it's appropriate, I guess, to tie in the Chimney Hills issue with this. I'll just ask, is the Planning Department aware of what's going on at Chimney Hills that these people are talking about tonight?
They are aware, yes.
So is there any action being taken, or is everything fine, or?
I'll defer to Mr. Chairman. He's the zoning administrator, and he's tasked with enforcement of zoning violations.
All right. Well, as long as you're aware of it and you're taking care of that part of it.
Yes, sir, we are aware.
Mr. Chairman, if I may add, and of course, from the zoning side, we're aware, as is the building official.
All right.
Thank you.
The, what's before is, like I said earlier, if, if we've been tasked with, I guess, looking at this, the DRC, possibly there might have been some avenues where we could have worked with this. But the supervisors directed this to come through fast track, the way they wanted it. Whether they want to reduce the fee or up the fee, that's entirely up to them. We have control over fees. It's just the ordinance before us. When you do take this back to the supervisors, though, if they do start changing this around, I would like you to ask them to think about the process, the right process for bringing up new ordinance there. And like I said earlier, I don't support making this by-right use. To me, it, it's not fair to the citizens out there. There was a comment made earlier tonight, when you look out at the Back Creek, Gainsborough, look at putting towers out there, that's a nowhere. It's not nowhere. A lot of people live out there. They don't want to see a tower necessarily right next to their house, next to one of their fields. Respect the process and give the citizens a chance to come in and talk about this.
Ted? Mr. Thompson?
One thing I would also like staff to look into a little bit more. I'm certainly not an expert on 5G, but from what I've read, you can accomplish 5G service with towers basically 50 feet in height. Maybe because of topo, some may have to go up to 100 feet. So if we would do this by right, we could end up with cellphone towers in residential areas and proliferated a lot of other areas, maybe where this wasn't intended. It's one of those consequences of, of trying to do something that's good, but the unintended consequences might not be what you're looking at. So I would ask staff to investigate that a little bit more, because I know there's some other parts of the country are having trouble now with 5G because of being able to be placed on 50-foot or lower towers. If we would have had that in place tonight, it's quite possible that the housing development there would have a, two or three towers. Now, you have to have more towers for 5G. They're not as tall, but you end up with more towers. And they could have been spread around through residential areas eventually. Like I said, you know, I can remember back when there was no RP west of 81. Now that's gone by the, the books. Imagine in the future, we will end up, if, if this ordinance passed, we would end up with by-right use of towers east of 81 in the whole county, maybe outside of the urban development area. But we'd end up with a lot more towers, maybe than what we're intending. And I certainly am not in favor of building towers without having conditional use permits.
I can add one point of clarification. The Planning Commission and the board, subsequently on December 11, did approve the two-track process, so that by-right towers up to 50 feet are already allowed across the county, and anything above that would require a CUP. I just, I think that warrants clarification.
Right.
Thank you.
I'm aware of that, but that's, still I'd like you to look at the.
Yes, sir, of course.
5G.
Thank you, Mr. Klein. Mr. Morrison?
Mr. Klein, when this came before the Planning Commission before, part of the discussion was have staff look at ability to reduce fees. So if you have a commercial enterprise, you would have a commercial fee. But for homeowners, there should be a possibility of reducing the fee as well. Has staff made any headway on that, or?
We, we did communicate the request from the Planning Commission to explore the fees in the board's discussion. At that discussion on the 11th, they did not discuss the fees. They simply acted on the ordinance amendment as it was proposed. Supervisor Graber has made a proposal about the fees tonight. We will certainly convey those comments again as part of the record of this conversation this evening.
And also what would be.
But the board controls the fees.
What would be a reasonable and fair fee in this case, not just. What would be a reasonable and fair fee in this case, not just picking numbers out of there, but what's the cost to the county to enforce this so that, you know, we're not putting ourselves at another disadvantage by accident?
I'd be happy to just state, if you will, that our fee schedule is $75 for kind of a cottage, home occupation, cottage occupation, low level. Most other conditional use permits are $750. So, it may be appropriate to think of it in a manner like most of our other conditional use permits at the $750 level. Most of the costs associated with that go towards legal advertisements and requirements that we have to meet in order to ensure the public process is done correctly.
Thank you. Mr. Mo?
I just would second some of the comments that have been made, that I'm certainly not comfortable with eliminating the CUP requirement for any cell tower, any telecommunications tower above 50 feet. I think there are a lot of reasons why that could end up, you know, being a mistake, especially in the western part of the county. I do think, though, from a Planning Commission perspective, another piece to go forward, I think the idea of treating things differently from a fee perspective makes a lot of sense if we're trying to get service out into the western part of the county for residents out there. But I think it'd be helpful. I think one of the hard things with this is we're kind of flying blind when it comes to, you know, some of the considerations that we do need to keep in mind from a technical perspective, and that's where, you know, a rural broadband, you know, strategic plan of some type would be beneficial. It really is something that, I mean, a lot of jurisdictions with rural areas, and that includes communities to the east, are going in that direction to try to fill the gap. And that then provides, you know, not just the providers with a game plan, but also, you know, the decision-making bodies with some guidelines and parameters. So, I would hope that that's something that, you know, as the Board considers the full range of options, that that's something that's seriously considered as well, so.
Thank you, Mr. Mo. Any other questions, discussion? Thank you, Mr. Klein. Hearing no one, entertain a motion. Anyone can do this?
I move we deny the request before us.
Second.
Motion to deny, and we got a second.
Yes.
The yes would be to, as approval for denial or for denial, I know would be against that. I'll start down on the other end this time, Mr. Mo.
Mo, yes.
Dawson, yes.
Trippett, yes.
Morrison, yes.
Morden, yes.
Thomas, yes.
Oats, yes.
Klein, yes.
Daniel, yes.
Ambrogi, yes.
Marston, yes.
Chair votes, yes. This ordinance will go, this motion will go towards the Board of Supervisors on the February 12 meeting with a denial. Thank you. Thank you for everyone that spoke. Our next item on the agenda is an action item. It's the 2020-2025 Capital Improvement Plan.
Oh, God.
Mr. Ruddy, even though you're not, says Mr. Perkins here, but I know better.
Definitely.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission. Again, this is a discussion item tonight, but we're also seeking action from the Planning Commission. It's of the 2020 to 2025 Capital Improvement Plan. The CIP, of course, is a document that schedules all of those major capital expenditures for the county for the ensuing five-year period. And if you recall from the Capital Improvement Plan, there's an additional component to that that projects long-term projects for six years now. As we do every year, we make a disclaimer, if you will, that inclusion of projects in the CIP, a good planning document, is no way an indication that Frederick County will be undertaking the projects. The CIP is advisory and intended for users' capital facilities planning document, and again, not necessarily for requesting funding allocations. So, once adopted, the project priorities, estimates may change throughout the year, and it's also possible that projects will not get funded. As the CIP has consistently done, it continues to reinforce the connection between the CIP and the county's comprehensive plan, the 2035 comprehensive plan, which aids us in a variety of different things, including future rezoning applications. There are 82 projects in this year's CIP. And if you recall and see from your agenda, schools, parks, and recreation, the regional library, county administration, fire and rescue, transportation, and Winchester Regional Airport are all entities, if you will, that are covered by the Capital Improvement Plan. The CIP is broken down into three main sections, three tables. Those that are general government expenditures, which are schools, parks, library, administration, fire and rescue, a second one being transportation, and a third one being airport. Of course, most of the funding for those comes from a different place outside of the general county revenue. In your agenda, you have the whole CIP as provided. I just skim through that here, if you will. Of course, the cover, it includes the table I identified with all of the different projects included. If we need to go into look at any of them, we certainly can do. But of course, you recall that the projects provided by the different departments and their boards and commissions are ranked by those specific entities, of course, not by the Planning Department. Included also in the CIP beyond the table and beyond the project descriptions are four maps, which identify the general location of the proposed improvements identified on the Capital Improvement Plan. Again, the first map here identifies the general governmental kind of improvements. A second map is specific to schools, a third map to parks and recreation, and of course, the fourth map deals with transportation. The Comprehensive Plans and Programs Committee endorsed this at their December meeting. As it is a comprehensive plan component, they determined that the CIP is in conformance with the comprehensive plan, and they forwarded it here to the Planning Commission. From the Planning Commission, it will go on to the Board of Supervisors, who will hopefully direct it forward to a public hearing. This evening, we're seeking recommendation from the Planning Commission for the CIP. And as you recall, we're also seeking affirmation that the CIP is in conformance with the comprehensive plan, as the CIP is a component of the comprehensive plan that provides the 2232, if you review, if you will, to ensure that these public projects are in conformance with the county's comprehensive plan. Mr. Chairman, I'd be happy to answer any questions that the Planning Commission may have, and of course, we're looking for a recommendation here this evening.
All right. Any question for Mr. Ruddy? Anything that you'd like for him to go in-depth with line by line?
I can go through some school stuff.
No comments? You've got one comment, Mr. Ruddy?
I got one. It's, every year, you look at this thing, and the departments are supposed to be, I guess, looking at this plan as what they need. And I think sometimes several of the departments look at what they want also, and it turns to a Christmas wish list. But again, it's not a document that's being funded by the county, and whether it's a need or a want, it still doesn't negate that it does meet the comprehensive plan. I think sometimes there's a lot of dreaming on some of these projects. That's all I got to say.
Tom, take it. Mr. Thomas?
I'd like to add to that. Sometimes our Capital Improvement Plan gives people unwarranted expectations because there's a lot of things listed that we know aren't gonna happen.
Thank you.
And the year that it's on there, we know it's not gonna happen. And I wish we could come up with a more realistic capital improvement plan based on income and what we can actually afford to spend and not on somebody's Christmas wish list. But that's my comments.
Thank you. Anyone else? This is an action item. There's no other comments. I need a motion. Do we move this forward? Does anybody have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we send this forward with a positive recommendation to the Board of Supervisors.
Yes, yes, yes.
Second.
I got a second, and I'll start down with Mr. Marston.
Marston, yes.
Ambrogi, yes.
Daniel, yes.
Klein, yes.
Oats, yes.
Thomas, yes.
Morden, yes.
Morrison, yes.
Trippett, yes.
Dawson, yes.
Mo, yes.
Chair votes, yes. This will go to the Board of Supervisors on, for the January 22, 2020 meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Ruddy. While I have you, next meeting, do we have no other meetings scheduled under other, so?
We have no items for the February 5 meeting.
Okay, we'll get notified.
Cancel the February 5 meeting?
Got a motion, got a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
February 5 is canceled, whether they want it or not. I know a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
All those in favor of adjournment?
Aye.
We're adjourned.